Okay, we will call to order the town council meeting of Tuesday, March 5th. We will begin with roll call. Rebecca?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Present.
Mayor Rivasio.
Here.
And if you would join me in this salute to the flag.
I am so delighted to do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with open time for public comment, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. You'll be limited to, we're trying to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you could please give your name and address before your comment, that would be terrific. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the council about items not on the agenda? If you can't, yeah, come up to the microphone, please. Michael, you're up.
Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood Avenue. Mayor and councilman and town manager. First, I want to give credit to Todd and his staff for identifying urgent needs at town hall and providing momentum to solve them. The community development departments, planning, building, public works, an amazing group of dedicated employees are poorly housed in the basement, and the public service desk where I interact regularly with these folks is completely inadequate in an age of one-stop service counters. Also concerning to many of us, this cramped council chambers, it forces participants to stand or wait outside on the street on many occasions for crucial hearings, and in my opinion, is simply undemocratic. We all deserve much better accommodations to bring Corder Madera up to the level of surrounding communities. In identifying these needs, however, an assumption has been made that the present town hall site is the best place to build an addition that addresses these problems. In my opinion, as an architect and planner, this site is cramped and expensive to build on. In short, there's barely enough parking for the current town hall and fire station. The sloping topography creates the need for expensive grading and retaining structures, and forces multi-level construction that makes accessibility more difficult. This existing town hall is seismically deficient as a refuge site and not green in any sense of the word. Connecting it to a new structure will be an expensive task. Finally, even with the best design solution, our town hall site offers little opportunity for outdoor gathering for civic events and celebrations. So I believe it's time to consider what other locations are possible, given the significant land holdings of the town in this area, ones that would be much more budget-friendly, to create an intelligent master plan for town hall's future. Given the proposed investment in these long-term facilities, this is one of the most important decisions you will make as the council. Location, location, you know the rest. When I was working with Wilfred George, Dr. Flute, as he was called, to construct a bandstand gazebo, he initially wanted it to be in Larkspur where he lived. With others, we had created a master plan for Menke Park and Old Town Square that depicted a bandstand exactly where Piccolo Pavilion is now. Through our friendship in the town band, I convinced Mr. George that Menke was the perfect spot.
If you could just wrap it up.
Couple more sentences?
Please wrap it up.
I got finished my story.
Please, please hurry. We have a lot tonight.
Little did I know there would be town elders and even surrounding business people that felt constructing the bandstand was an intrusion on their quiet little historic park. The rest is history. Piccolo Pavilion was constructed with Woolfrid's generosity, and the structure has been hugely successful as a stage for summer concerts and events like Oktoberfest. So I will leave you with that example of how people's vision needs to be stretched at times to arrive at a plan that serves the largest number of stakeholders over future generations. Thanks for listening and thinking about it.
Thank you, Michael. And we're not allowed to address items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone else? If there was anyone else that wants to speak, if you could please line up behind the microphone, that would be terrific. I'd appreciate it. I want to make sure we keep things moving. Thank you.
Hi, Carla Condon, Paradise Drive in Corder Madera. I hadn't planned to say anything, but I wanted to just piggyback on what Michael just said with regard to our intergenerational center. We've been running it for just 10 months, and we're already outgrowing it. So I too look forward to a time when we can expand all our services to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to address the council but items not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to item 3A, our first presentation, Parks and Recreation Department annual report to council. Mario, is this you? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I also would like to extend a great thanks to our staff who's here, and I'm going to introduce them to you. As you recall, last year, we had our staff present to, and I talked a little bit about their roles and participation. I do want to say that the last, as Madam Condon said, in the last 10 months to a year, we've had a very dramatic change in our structure, as well as our programs, in a very positive way. Our events and the way that we operate our facilities and our department in general. So I do want to thank everybody who's here, who's been a huge part of that. I first want to introduce Ms. Christina Martin, who's here. She's one of our customer service representatives. Sitting next to her is our incoming summer playground director, Shannott Rodriguez, who's been with us for several, several years. And I will jump back real briefly to Ashley, who's here. Ashley's our past summer playground director. She's also worked with us on many different occasions for many, many different activities, and she's here in a support capacity for our staff, as well as to Shannott for the upcoming summer playground season. Debbie Corrali is here, who is our other customer service representative. Nancy Cupp could not be here. Debbie has also taken a large role in the last few months with the expansion of our facility rentals, which we have had a huge amount of increase over the past six months, so I really appreciate your help with that. I want to introduce Pam, who's our senior services coordinator. She's now moved more with assisting age-friendly with everything that has to do with the intergenerational center. So Pam, I really appreciate you being here. The two sitting to her right need no introduction, Carla Condon and Patty Stolier, who are here, who are volunteers for the community, really appreciate all their help that they're doing with the intergenerational center. Ruth Naneber, who is under Pam's wing in terms of our senior programs. We really appreciate you being here, Ruth, and she's been here for several months assisting with age-friendly programs, but she's also taking over and assisting with our Thursday activities. And one of our newest members of our staff, Helen, she's on our weekend and after-hours staff, and we appreciate her help and support with executing all the things that everybody else does, busy paperwork, shuffling things around. She gets the brunt of it after hours and on the weekends, so I really appreciate you being here. Thank you, Helen. And the person I pretty much could not operate without, our recreation supervisor, Brian Hernandez, who's here. Brian has taken a huge leap in, one, in responsibilities, but faith in terms of the things that I've delegated to him over the past 10 months. Been a huge step for him. He's really stepped up and really been able to streamline some processes with the front desk staff, so I really appreciate everything that he's doing. So Brian, thank you for being here as well. Am I missing anybody? No.
Your boss, Fred.
Right, and our Steve in the commission chair, who you will not ever find in pants, I realized, even in red. Fred, I appreciate you being here for support.
Long pants, that is.
That's right.
Long pants.
There you go, thank you. Rain or shine. So I do want to, again, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce our staff. For those of you who are not able to make it down to the community center too often, which most of you are able to, I really appreciate the support that we have had over the years. As I mentioned, the past 12 months have been challenging. Our town manager has put a big challenge in front of us, and the staff has really been able to communicate effectively with each other the challenges that we've had. I've been able to, we've been able to come together as a team and really execute a vision that is going to fulfill the council and town manager's vision of where we want to go and where you'd like to see our community center and Parks and Recreation Department go in the next several years, and we're working towards that. And age-friendly solutions and age-friendly Corder Madera and the intergenerational center are a big part of that. So a couple of things I want to touch on as we enter into the budget season. I do want to mention that we have done a budget review, a mid-year budget review with the Park and Recreation Commission. We've included them more in the last 18 months on the budget process that we haven't had in the past, which I really appreciate their input through the commission meetings, as well as the executive advisory board. We've also formed an ad hoc programming committee, which we're using to filter and process different ideas for programs for the upcoming fiscal year, also in conjunction with age-friendly Corder Madera and the intergenerational center. And the other thing I want to mention, which has been really in the forefront of our planning process, is our partnership with our neighbors, the city of Larkspur. Dick Whitley, Nick Stone, myself, and Brian Hernandez have really worked a lot over the past nine-plus months on coordination with events, programs. And one thing that I'm really excited to mention, and I did mention it in my staff report for our later item, is our technology. In the next fiscal year, we are looking at consolidating our software. So the Corder Madera and Larkspur Recreation Departments will be seamlessly online. You'll be able to register for a program that is through the Larkspur Recreation Department, as well as the town of Corder Madera, through one portal. And I want to stress that it's in the next fiscal year, not the next calendar year. But there's some, there's some big challenges with that, and there's a lot to decipher through details, but it's a really big step forward. Dick Whitley, myself are really excited about it. There's a lot of challenges with our different programs, the formats that they adhere to, the sort of institutional knowledge that we all have, as well as the different standards that folks have to expect in which, how things are processed and how things appear online. So there's a lot of work to do, but we are very excited about that. And those are really the two main things I wanted to touch on very briefly, and I'd certainly be able to, and look forward to answering any questions that the council may have at this time.
Are there any questions from the council on Mario's presentation, Mr.?
You differentiated between calendar year and fiscal year. Does fiscal year mean July 2019?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
So that's when increases and decreases in fees will go into effect?
Correct.
Or new applications as of that time?
Correct.
Cool.
And the software will be merged or overlapping?
It would be merged probably closer to the calendar year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Mario, thank you, and as a business item, we're on the agenda with this a little bit later for
Sure.
the recreation fee schedule. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to item for the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine, have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the council staff or public may request removal of an item for discussion. Rescheduling of the items will be at the discretion of the mayor and the town council. I'm going to request that we remove item 4B, which is the second reading of the tobacco ordinance. And is there anyone else who wants to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to turn this over to the town manager. Yes?
After public comment, I'll approve the other item.
Yeah, I think we, don't we have to handle this item first since we pulled it?
You can do the rest of it if you like.
Oh, whatever you like.
Oh, okay, well then, you're on a roll. Go ahead.
Off second. If there's no public comment?
No, I don't think there's any, we've already pulled one item. Is there any other member of the public who wants to pull another item?
Okay. I'll move that we approve item 4A and 4C.
Wait, the attorney's looking at me.
If I may, mayor, you do want to take public comment on the substantive consent calendar that, other than what has been upheld at this point?
Okay, is there any public comment on 4A or 4C? Okay.
Okay, motion, ma'am.
So we have a motion. We have a second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here, yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Who's mic, whose mic doesn't work? Somebody's signaling that maybe it's yours.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio.
Yes. Okay, for item 4B, I'm going to turn this over to the town manager, and we also have Bob Curry here from the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do, we have Bob Curry. He's the program manager for the Tobacco Control Program for the County of Marin. And just a little bit of history regarding this ordinance. As we know, this ordinance has taken a few maturation over the past two years within this county. Something staff has done as we've waited for some of the court cases and some of the changes that have happened within the county before we took this up with the council, and one of those is because we really tried to streamline our ordinances that affect the central Marin area, San Ansommo, Larkspur, and Corder Madera. The social host ordinance is an example of that. So as this, as some of these revisions that came to us, really at the staff level, we rely on Bob Curry and many of the people in this room right now, from our coalition groups and others. They're the experts. This is an issue. We all acknowledge it. As this discussion has taken its course over the past year, the council, individually and as a group, has really directed staff to do something and take an aggressive stance, something similar to what the County of Marin did late last year. So when we took this ordinance to council at this last meeting, we had limited discussion in this area of the four exemptions. Those exemptions are on page 11 of the staff report. Councilmember Beckman, at the time, asked the question, well, why do we have an exemption for cigars over $5 and packages, and packaging over a certain amount? And it was a good question, and we really, I'll just say, as a group, we fell short kind of on that conversation of really diving into the exemptions. Council approved the ordinance as recommended. Again, this ordinance came to us from some of our groups, and it was really the draft ordinance that San Ansommo was considered taking to their council. And again, that goes back to the Central Marin discussion. Hindsight, after we approved it at the last meeting, I think there's been some good discussion, some good emails, some good staff conversation, Bob being one of them, of really maybe where we fell short, and we want to take a fresh look at this. And so I wanted to give you some background of why we're having this conversation now when we just accepted the first reading of an ordinance or introduced it at the last meeting. What staff's asking you to consider, and I'm going to turn this over to Bob again, he's our expert and can give us some background, and I think it would be good to have a back-and-forth discussion. But what we're asking you is to consider an outright ban. And so that would be to waive all the exemptions, if that's something council would wish to do. Staff has a recommendation on what that would look like for you, and that is something that we could then reintroduce that ordinance at this meeting. And again, it could be ultimately approved at the upcoming meeting. There are a member, there are a few members of the public that would wish to, you know, speak to this issue. But again, I want to turn it over to Bob, because really, he can give us some good background, and he is our expert that we're relying on in this area.
Thank you. And good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I just want to thank you right up front for all the work that you and your staff have put into this policy, the TRL, Tobacco Retail Licensing. And I'm also here to state that the Public Health Department and the tobacco program are always in full support of the most progressive and effective TRL possible. And I want to apologize for the misunderstanding about the two different versions of the model ordinances, and explain why we are being asked by the coalitions, many of whom are here today, and some of our voluntaries, American Cancer, American Heart, and others, who are asking that we remove the exemptions from the ordinance. By law, I'm not permitted to lobby, and I think that's where all the problems arose, because I was just being a little too cautious in when I was talking, working with Rebecca. I should have explained that what the ordinance that we presented last August was a Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance. It was a model from Nevada. It was the best model that we had in the county at the time. And later last fall, the board supervisors, who already headed TRL, passed another ordinance, which was a flavor ban policy, which did not have the exemptions in it. At that time, I should have found a way to reintroduce that and to merge or marry the two ordinances together, which would have given the ordinance without the exemptions in it, because that is the best possible policy, and that's the one that the coalitions and the voluntaries are all supporting. So that is, that is, you know, how it has happened, that we came forward with an ordinance that really wasn't, wasn't the best. But now, we have hopefully corrected that. We have presented the ordinance without the exemptions would be the best policy. And I also want to say, before we have any other discussion, that I want you to understand that the Smoke Free Marin Coalition members are very highly respected throughout Marin County and the state as leaders in tobacco control. Because of their expertise, I do not want my oversight to reflect on the excellent work of the Smoke Free Marin Coalition, since they support the strongest possible TRL ordinance with no exemptions for any flavored tobacco product. I apologize again for all the extra efforts that you have had to go through, but I hope, with the request of the coalitions, that you will look at what they are asking for tonight.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
I do have, thank you. Where do we have in our materials the proposed revised ordinance? Where exactly is it?
I don't know if you, I don't think we have it because it wasn't on the
Okay, how specifically do we change this one, or do you need a whole fresh one to do it?
Sure. What is the process, and maybe this is a question for Teresa as much as anything else? I mean, it sounds like we have the option tonight, if we want, to actually make revisions to this tonight and approve it, but how does that process work?
You are correct. You can make whatever revisions you would like tonight. Any substantive revisions would require reintroduction of essentially a revised ordinance that then would come back to you for final adoption. So you would, you cannot adopt it tonight with any substantive changes. If you want to make the changes that I'm understanding would be made, the changes would be on page 11, section 8. So it would be section 5.06.040, subsection 8. At the end of the paragraph, there is a word unless, and then a colon. So you would remove the word unless, and then you would also remove A, B, C, and D. So it essentially strikes the four exceptions to the rule.
So you remove the colon after the word unless at the end of paragraph 8, and you eliminate A, B, C, and D?
You actually leave the colon, but you remove the word unless. Actually, actually, you would make it a period there. Excuse me.
Full stop.
Yes, correct. Yes, you would need to, it would end there. The sentence would end there with the period, and then from unless, colon, and A through D would be removed.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify for everybody.
Do you want to also remove number 9?
If it was something we decided to do, how it would work.
Right. And I think the other issue in play, and I'm going to defer this back to, on the staff side of this, would be, I think there's a question about whether or not paragraph 9, which sets forth a minimum packaging size for cigars, should be kept? Or whether any, or the exception to that, which is the last sentence of 9, should be kept?
I would think the exception doesn't make any sense. Right, this, this $5 limit?
Who are you asking?
I'm not asking. I'm
Questioning.
Oh. I'm discussing.
Oh, we're not discussing?
Oh, you're right. You're right. Excuse me.
You would have been in the ethics training unit.
Wow.
Ouch! So we're just doing questions?
I have a question, please. Where do we stand with respect to the other two communities in our Central Marin Police Authority? Are they behind us? Are we still in the lead? Are they moving forward? Where do they stand?
So, good question. San Ansommo was in the lead on this one, and I think San Ansommo has been asked to take a fresh look at their ordinance as well, just like we have. So I'm told from their staff that they're going to delay. So we're in the lead now. So we're now the lead agency.
Okay, and Larkspur is bringing up the
Larkspur is bringing this to their council tomorrow for the first reading. Their recommendation is, as we presented last meeting, as we were all going to present the same ordinance. But I have talked to staff and the city manager, and so I will let him know tonight if we do make a change, they will make the same recommended change as us tomorrow. Because it's, so
Go ahead.
You are the lead.
Yes, Sloane.
So I want to be, just to be clear, the recommended change is to that subsection 8 that we talked about, and no other changes to the proposed ordinance. And we would then be the leader.
We'd be the rep?
But I just want to be clear, because I agree
We'd be the same as the county, hon.
But the question from one of my fellow councilmembers here was, it seems like subsection 9 now doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense.
The reason for the, to limit the pack size of cigars is because if they have little cigars, those are cheap enough for young people to go get those and start smoking those instead of the more expensive cigarettes or more expensive cigars.
Okay, and the same analysis?
Put them in a large 20 in a box, then it's not
But just to be clear then, so you're not recommending any change to subsection 9?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So they're not recommending, so the change is to
Sub 8, that's it.
Or number, it's subsection 8, excuse me. Okay, any other questions up here? We can open this up for public comment?
I think Jim's trying to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I have some questions about the actual, if it's passed, how it will be implemented. It looks like that you can get three or four strikes, and then you lose your license. If we pass it, it goes into effect in 30 days, and we start enforcing it?
No.
Well, not, but the ordinance is effective in 30 days. It won't be enforced starting in January. What about prior activities that they've done? Will those strikes carry forward? Or basically they're getting things late and just going forward?
And we would also have some work to do. One of the things we are contemplating was, would we reintroduce something tonight with the change? Or would we bring something back to you at a later date and really get back with the business community, the ones that this affects? But since we have so much time between now and the, you know, when we enforce this ordinance, staff feels comfortable, if you do make a change tonight, to reintroduce it tonight, and then we'll work with the business community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we actually have to reintroduce it if we decide to move forward tonight? Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from council on this item? Okay, then I'm going to open up to the public for comment. If there's any member of the public that'd like to comment on this. Okay, if there's more than one, if you can please line up behind the microphone and give your name and your address. That'd be great. Thank you. We have a three-minute time limit, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gia Asher. I'm a high school senior in Marin County studying tobacco and policy. I live at 387 Devon Drive. I am a member of the Smoke Free Marin and Youth Coalition and the Coalition Connection, and I am here tonight to represent the youth population of Marin County. I would like to thank you for pulling the tobacco retail license off the consent calendar, because we all want to get this policy right the first time around. Flavored products are harmful in any capacity, and it is the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. Your careful consideration of removing the exemptions for flavored products is admirable, and I am glad to see you are taking the next steps to make a change in Corder Madera. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kazio Chupitza, and I live in Corder Madera. For the last few months, I have been helping my dad collect tobacco and e-cigarette waste at high schools in the Bay Area. I have been to a couple of different high schools, but I would like to focus only on Redwood High School and a high school in the East Bay. I pick these high schools because one is in a high-income neighborhood, and the other is in a low-income neighborhood. At Redwood, in the parking lot lot, on one day, we found 126 Juul pods and caps and one cigar butt. At the low-income high school parking lot, we found 11 flavored cigarrillo mouthpieces, 18 flavored cigarrillo wrappers, 11 flavored cigar wrappers, and only one Juul pod. We find so little Juul waste at the low-income neighborhood school, because for most kids, Juul devices and pods are expensive. A Juul device is $35, and a four-pack of Juul pods are $21. On the other hand, one flavored cigarrillo pack that contains five flavored cigarrillos only costs a dollar. For every four-pack of Juul pods, you can get 105 flavored cigarrillos. That's dangerously cheap. Last night, I went to three gas stations and one liquor store, and I could not believe how many flavored tobacco products, including Juul pods, flavored cigars, and flavored cigarrillos they sell. So today, I ask you to ban retail sale of all flavored tobacco products in Corder Madera. I never want to see a flavored cigar and cigarrillo epidemic at any high school in Marin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jeremiah Mock. I've written to you about this issue, and I appreciate you very much being responsive to all the community concern about the issue of not having any exemptions. So in addition to following the county's lead, I want to give you a recent scientific article. This was published in 2016, called Sweeter Than Swisher, and it discusses the emerging epidemic that really is not being well documented of flavored cigarrillo use, particularly among Latino and African-American youth in urban areas. And their conclusion, which I underline on the bottom of the abstract, is that their findings on social media warrant urgent need for surveillance and serious attention from public health professionals and policymakers. Future tobacco use prevention initiatives should be adapted to ensure that they are inclusive of LCC, which are little cigars and cigarrillos. So I'll leave that for you to read at your leisure. So I don't want to entirely distract us from the issue of Juuling. It's an epidemic here. So Kazuha and Gia have worked with me. I'll just pass these across for you. These are three different time intervals.
No, thank you. It's okay.
So these are what Juul pods look like. This is, these aren't the stinkiest of what we pick up, but, you know, there are, it continues to be an epidemic. This is on six-month intervals, and we know that that's a problem. I'll give you these photos, please. Just take a look at those. So that's, that's what the collection of waste looks like. However, it's important to note that at Redwood High School, we found one cigar on campus, and that's actually a type of cigar that's sold for about $13 across the street as a single. And that's, that's what this looks like. And then, at the communities that I talked about, that were, there are large Latino populations, this is what the Swisher sweets look like. Okay? We have these being sold in all of the gas stations and across the street here. And for anybody that thinks these are more flavored cigarrillos, like pineapple, cognac, peach, pear, these are the ones that Kazuha talked about that are five for a dollar. This one is called Bee Berry. This is clearly marketed for youth. These are known to be starter products. And for anybody that says that kids don't smoke cigars, these are all cigars, and you can take a look, this one right here is grape. No adult cigar smoker is interested in smoking grape. So these are very dangerous products, and
You.
And pipe includes water pipes. So don't forget that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure thing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Dave Bonfilio. I'm a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and a First Five Marin Commissioner. I rise in support of passing the ordinance with no exemptions to flavored tobacco. You've heard from the young man about flavored tobaccos targeting African-American and Latino youth in particular, and you don't want to continue that epidemic going forward. So please take a leadership role in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jodi Prochaska, and I'm an Associate Professor of Medicine at Stanford University. I live on Homestead Boulevard in Mill Valley, so just over the hill. And I worked with the County Board of Supervisors in passing the flavor ban for the unincorporated areas. You absolutely are going to be a leader here, and I applaud your, it sounds like, decision that you're working towards in removing the exemptions. I'm also the recent former president of the Society for Research on Nicotine and Tobacco, which is the global society in the area on research on nicotine and tobacco addiction. I do clinical trials, and I've done studies in Marin, working with job seekers to help them to quit smoking, so that they can have an easier time finding work. It is exceedingly different, difficult to help people quit smoking. Our best treatments, we get about 20% to 30% to quit. Your best case will be to prevent youth from starting to smoke. And as you're seeing, by Dr. Mock showing, these flavored tobacco products, they are designed for kids. It makes it smoother, easier to inhale and nicotine to become addicted. They are not made for adults. The mango, the pina colada, those are not things that the adults are smoking. So including cigarrillos, cigars, in your, in your ban is absolutely critical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ravazio and City Council members. Dennis Roroni, Supervisor for the Fourth District.
Folks, this is our county supervisor, Dennis Roroni.
Representing Corder Madera.
Thank you, Dennis.
It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I wanted to come down tonight to support your adopting this ordinance, and I think the revisions you're considering are worthwhile to, to take another week or two to decide. As you know, the county passed a similar ordinance last fall. I was very proud to see that come forth and protect our young students that will be impacted by this. The tobacco industry is relentless when it comes to this kind of thing, and if we don't take action, there's no way to protect our children. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you for coming tonight, Dennis. Appreciate it. Always good to have the county supervisor here.
Good evening. My name is Lori Bramner. I'm the California Grassroots Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I live next door in Sonoma. And I want to thank you for your work in considering this ordinance with a revision necessary to protect the health of the youth of Corder Madera. I want to direct your attention to the March 1st letter from our organization, the ACS, American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network letter, and then also the March 4th joint letter from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, American Heart Association, America Lung Association, Tobacco-Free Kids, and Breathe California. All five organizations are in agreement that the appropriate policy is a comprehensive one without any exemptions, as was passed by the County of Marin, San Francisco, Alameda, Richmond, among other communities. It's well documented that menthol, fruit, and candy-flavored tobacco products are a key part of the tobacco industry's strategy to bait youth into becoming tomorrow's addicts, and we can't take time addressing the skyrocketing use of e-cigarettes among our youth. We look forward to seeing the youth of Corder Madera, enjoying the same protections as other Bay Area communities. I applaud your leadership in eliminating the sale of all flavored tobacco products in Marin, in Corder Madera. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, then we will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion.
I mean, I don't think we need, does anybody even want to discuss it, or should we just make the motion?
I'm very much in favor of doing exactly what we talked about, so.
My only question is, is it more effective or efficient to pass this and then come back with an amendment, or is it a toss-up?
Staff recommends that you, if you're going to make a change, do it tonight, and let's reintroduce it.
I'll make a motion that we reintroduce ordinance number 983 to amending the Corder Madera Municipal Code Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations to Add Tobacco Retailer License Requirement, and prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, and prohibit pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing, with the modification that appears at Hang on, what's the government code section?
Paragraph eight.
It is, but the code section is 5.06.040, subsection eight, to eliminate the word unless at the end of that first full paragraph, and put a period after the word product, and then eliminate subs A through D underneath sub eight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhn Hart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio.
Yes. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, if I may, I just wanted to add, the city manager of Larkspur just advised me that they will also take the recommended changes that we just made to their council tomorrow night.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, there are no public hearings, so we're going to move on to our first business item, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number 06/2019, approving parks and rec fee schedule for fiscal year 2019-20. Mario, I think you're up again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity, as, as we traditionally do annually, sometimes every other year, the Park Recreation Commission reviews all the fees that are associated with our facilities and programs that surround the Parks and Recreation Department. I'd like to touch on a few of the substantial, substantial changes that were, that staff's recommending this evening, that the commission reviewed last week at their February meeting. We've reformatted the, the resolution a little bit for ease of reading. We've created a chart to be able to follow the years that we've made recommended changes, as well as the highlights in red where we're recommending changes for this upcoming fiscal year. In no particular order, the first one that would like to draw your attention to, in the past, probably, I'd say, four to five years, there has been a dramatic increase in the amount of NRGs, Neighborhood Response Group, that have been utilizing the community center, which is wonderful. There's a lot of good community action being organized around emergency response, which is wonderful. To, to bring the point home, it's that they are using a lot of time in the community center. We're happy to help them coordinate their events and activities. We have been doing so at no charge up to this point, and staff is recommending that we move forward with offering a discount to those groups of what would amount to 50% off the residential rate. The next change that we're looking at is for St. Patrick's CYO volleyball. They initially started using the Neil Cummins Gym in the season of 2014, and we were approached by the organization to offer a discount to them, which the commission then supported. They have made minor, we have made minor increases over the past couple of years, last fiscal year from $25 to $27.50, and a more substantial one that we're recommending for this upcoming fiscal year from $27.50 to $35 per hour. The next one would be the annual use of the fields from Twin Cities Little League softball, as well as Twin Cities Girls softball. They have not had an increase in several years. We are recommending an increase from, actually, that is a typo. It should say from $15 an hour to $20 an hour. I apologize, to clarify. Oops. I'll have to look at the draft of that, so I apologize for that, but it should be from 15 to 20 per hour. And moving further down, the ones that need a little more clarification, I'd like to review are summer playground program fees. In close work with the city attorney, we have made the major change, which is the residency designation between the, for the summer playground program itself. Over the past several years, the distinction has been based on county residency, Marin County, non-Marin County residents. This year, the recommended change would be to include residents of Corder Madera, Larkspur, and those attendees of the Larkspur-Corder Madera School District. And so for that reason, you see actually a decrease in the non-resident rate. Staff felt it appropriate to phase in that rate over a couple of years, so you would see another increase next year. So the increases that you see there are from, or sorry, the decrease that you see there for non-residents of Corder Madera and Larkspur were for, would be from $8.50 to $7.50, and then the simulating discounts also moving down $100 per child. We are recommending an increase for the weekly fee, which is from $175 to $185, and the daily drop-in fee from 50 to 55. Now, do you want to stress that the, the residency clarification, the distinction that we're making, is actually going to produce an increase in revenue of over 10%? We do have approximately over 45, it's more than, more like 47% of the population of summer playground are actually outside of the boundaries that I've described of Corder Madera, Larkspur, and its school districts. So we are expecting that the increase, the change in residency would actually cause an increase in revenue. The last item I want to mention is the inclusion of our Corder Madera Age Friendly Intergenerational Center membership dues. I do want to clarify that those dues are to a nonprofit organization, so they are tax deductible. So they, they should be listed as, as donations and not fees themselves. So for the calendar year of 2019, they've been set at $25 per year for residents of Corder Madera, and 40 per year for non-residents of Corder Madera. And alongside with the staff of Age Friendly, the Intergenerational Center, as well as the commission, we'd be looking at reviewing those on a calendar basis. So we'd be looking at, bringing those back to the commission and council in potentially October, November of this year.
On that other, can I, a question, a quick question on the Yeah. Very last one. Did you just speak in shorthand when you said Corder Madera residents on, on that last one, or you, did you intentionally eliminate Larkspur residents on that?
Yes, I was not speaking in shorthand. It's, it's very specific for Corder Madera residents, and those residents, non-residents of Corder Madera.
Okay.
Specifically for the Intergenerational Center fees, or, membership dues.
And one other question, if I may. When the, when we, or a town agency wants to use the community center for an event, it's, it's free, right?
Correct.
The NRGs, are they not an extension of town staff functions in effect? I mean, this is, it's very closely coordinated with, with fire and, and police evacuation and so forth. I'm just, I'm just curious about the rationale and applicability of that, and what you, what your back and forth is on that, why it shouldn't be free.
Sure. So I do want to indicate that in the fee resolution itself, we have indicated that all town-sponsored NRG trainings would be at no cost, so they would be utilizing our community center as before, those coordinated with the town and Lori Rice. I'm speaking more specifically towards the social groups, the social activities that are surrounded
Right.
Amongst the Neighborhood Response Groups, not trainings.
And if I could add to that, I think it's, when we can, we want to support the NRGs, absolutely. They are an extension of the town, but also, the NRG program is extending, it's extending to unincorporated Greenbrier, to Kenfield, and to Larkspur. And so what we're seeing is, we're having a lot of events, and a lot of, and it's really taking up the entire time, because they need space. And so the community center has turned into that space, and so what the managers have done, and the, the fire chief in Kenfield, we're committed between Greenbrier, Larkspur, Corder Madera, and Kenfield, to find meeting space for the NRGs to support. But what's happening is Corder Madera is supporting all of the NRGs in these three communities, and it's just some and it's just something we need to, you know, really take a thoughtful approach to.
Because it means that you can't use it for something else.
That's correct. And the council has, remember, we had a $600,000 deficit, or I'll say, funding hole within the Park and Rec Department 18 months ago when we had this conversation, and one of the things the council directed us at the time was to close that gap, but to really look at how we can better use the community center, but also allow exemptions for community groups. And I'm happy to say with the work of the commission and staff, we're there. We met our funding mark. We're down, we've cut about $400,000 in losses in the work that staff and the commission has done, and so really happy about that.
Great. Questions? Yes?
Yeah, looking at your chart, down at the bottom where it says parking lot, Redwood Highway, the printout I have showed a strike-through on that. Am I, does that mean we're no longer running out the former gravel lot?
Correct. So the, I'm actually working with the management from Mace Ridge to create a thoughtful process and procedures for how we're going to authorize use of that facility, whether it be through community events that we're looking at offering. But the majority of permitted uses would all eventually go through Mace Ridge and the village management. Any fees that they would decide to assess would solely be of their decision, so we struck it out of our current fee resolution.
And the kids' club is the same thing. It's gone away.
Correct.
Just one quick, and I'm happy to go with whatever you're recommending here, Mario, but why, just out of curiosity, why is there such a significant delta in the per-hour charge for CYO basketball versus CYO volleyball?
Thank you. I appreciate you asking that. The St. Patrick CYO basketball program and the volleyball program are very different. Although they're run through the same auspices of the St. Patrick's, some Catholic youth organizations, their membership base is much different. Their, the volume of kids that utilize the Neil Cummins Gym and space is very different. Yes, they are utilizing the same, the same space itself, but their membership base is much smaller. The commission and staff's intention is to see that increased over time to, for them to be at more parity, but in terms of the volume of kids who are attending either program is very different. So the spirit of offering a discount to that program that has a much smaller base was taken into consideration over, and also the volume of time that they would be using.
So it doesn't have to do with how hard they're taxing the gym? It has to do with your evaluation of their need?
Correct.
I see.
Just as a side point, because I worked in, I was a coach in CYO for 14 years and actually worked on the initial funding proposition to the town on this, two-thirds of the kids in the CYO basketball and volleyball programs are not at St. Patrick's. It is, you know, it's actually primarily a public school program, so it's not like the town is subsidizing, you know, private school services program. Most of the kids are not at St. Patrick's. Sorry, it's a comment. Shouldn't have done that. Any other questions?
I was at the ethics training. I should know better. God.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will open it up to the public for comment on this. Is there any public comment on this?
Patty Stollier with a different hat. Corte Madera Disaster Council and Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee. And I just wanted to find out if Mario or anybody has had any discussions with the NRG people, and they're cool with it to have this cost incurred because they have a budget of $0 in the NRGs. So if you have to come up with $150 for two hours, is that, am I doing the math right? I don't know where that comes from, so I just wanted to make sure that they're good and that money is going to come from somewhere so that these very worthy people can have a place to have their meetings. Thanks.
Carla Condon, Paradise Drive, Corte Madera. There's one thing that I would respectfully like to ask Mario to omit at this time, and that was the portion where he spoke about the fees, but they're really donations to the Age Friendly Intergenerational Center. These are, I'd like to explain, these are not fees. They are donations that go directly to Age Friendly Solutions, which is a 501(c)(3) that works apart from the town. I acknowledge that the Intergenerational Center falls under the org chart of Park and Rec. However, those charges go directly to a nonprofit that is not a part of the town. So I would like to ask, just to avoid confusion, that if people think that these are Park and Rec fees, and they in fact aren't, that at least for the rest of the calendar year, those charges, which are really donations, are omitted from the fee schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Fred Casisa, 18 Granada Drive. One thing on the NRGs, when we discussed this at the Park and Rec Commission, I believe there's over 40 NRGs right now. So again, it's not just, it involves staff time also because those NRGs wind up calling staff to figure out what time the community center's available. There's also a staffed element to this in addition just to the time with over 40 NRGs. And some of these NRGs, as my understanding, when they meet, they're not packing the community center. There could be 15 or 20 members, so we looked at that. And the NRG I belong to, which is the Minister of Estates, we actually meet at Aegis, so we found a spot over there where they give it free to the community center. So I just wanted to mention that. We also looked at, Mario mentioned this, but for social events, so if there is a type of thing where they want to have more of a gathering, we do this in our neighborhood at Skonkalo, we invite the whole neighborhood, something like that, that's where it would be 50% off. But again, it's starting to be, excuse my language, time-suck for staff council in addition to, again, taking up time at the community center.
And Fred, you're on the Parks and Rec Commission, right?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we will close public comment. Do you guys want to address what issues or questions?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, regarding Patty's comments, and they're good. Again, we are committed to supporting the NRGs. Lori, through Lori Rice, we've communicated some of the changes and our commitment to help her for meeting space. There is a budget within our Disaster Preparedness Fund of over $100,000 that does support the NRGs in meeting for meeting space and paying for it. When we don't have to pay for it, Corte Madera and Larkspur are going to do their best not to, but there is funding in there as well to support them. And what I would say is, on those large events, when we get the entire groups together and have big events, we will host those. You know, we wouldn't charge, but when we have the smaller groups, we're looking at charging, especially if we're hosting Larkspur and Greenbray and Kenfield types of groups. So, but it's an ongoing conversation, and we will, we fully support the NRGs and we'll continue to do that. And I'll ask Mario to touch on Carla's comments. Sure. So do you want to reiterate to the, for the council's knowledge that, I did clarify that the, for lack of a better word, fees, the reason that they're being included in the fee resolution itself is because the Age Friendly Intergenerational Center is under the auspices of the Park Recreation Department and by extension oversight through the Park Recreation Commission and the council. Very clearly, very easily make the clarification that those dollar amounts that you see there are described as tax-deductible donations to Age Friendly Solutions itself. It's not, it does not at any point go to the town of Corte Madera. It goes straight to them. To help clarify that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think one other item as it relates to the Intergenerational Center and working with Age Friendly Solutions, staff is, again, working with Age Friendly Solutions on a funding agreement, and so that would look like, we're going to put on these classes for the upcoming year, here's the instructors, and we'll come up with a funding arrangement between the two. And so council will also see a draft copy of that once we get through that as we approach the budget this fiscal year.
Thank you. So, yes, do you have questions?
Question. Well, I'm just trying to understand waiving fees for using the rec center or stuff like that. What's the actual procedure for doing it? Who makes the determination and who recommends it?
Sure.
Who calls whom to get away?
Rebecca, if I could trouble you to scroll up to the resolution itself, section, section four now? Yeah, section four. So the town civic organizations that, by building use agreement, receive free use of the, fee waiver of the community center are listed there in items A through J. There is language in respect to local community groups that do make the request for fee waiver for anything, whether it be a picnic site or the community center itself or program. Those are all run through myself. I would make a determination with staff in terms of how beneficial the event itself is to the community, what it serves, whether it serves Corte Madera or an extension of, and we make that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or for staff or discussion or a possible motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution number 06/2019 approving the proposed parks and rec fee schedule for fiscal year 2019-2020.
A minute motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mario.
Uh-oh. Yeah. Yes.
Yes, 100%. So where's the, I'll make an amended motion. Where's the typo?
Under the worksheet, listed as Twin Cities Little League and Twin Cities Girls Softball.
Hang on, wait, this is the attached, number two?
Yes.
Chart?
It's the page above that, sorry. In red, from $15 an hour to this fiscal year, that should read $20 an hour, not 25.
Where am I?
Under outdoor facilities, athletic fields.
First page of the chart, the Excel sheet.
And the last number in red.
Oh, I see. So it should, it should be 20, not 25?
Correct.
Okay, so I will make an amended motion, which is to propose the same resolution, but with a modification that appears at the line item on the row across from TCLL/TC softball, whereas in red it reads $25 an hour should be changed to read $20 an hour.
Second.
Still a second? Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
No, yes.
Mayor of Azio.
Yes.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let's move on to item 16B.
Is that what's going on?
I was looking something else.
Are you jumping ahead or what are you? Consideration and possible action to adopt resolution approving the town of Corte Madera's Housing Elements Annual Report, and we have a report from staff. Adam, are you up on this?
Oh, thank you.
This is your thing? This is yours, right?
It is, yes. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Hello. Let me just get settled here, one second. So this evening, we are requesting that the town council consider the Housing Element Annual Report that staff has prepared, and we are recommending that you adopt draft resolution 07/2019, which is attachment one to your packet this evening, and that memorializes your acceptance of the report and direct staff to forward the report on to the Department of Housing and Community Development. As described in the background, thank you, thank you, Tom. In the background section of the staff report, the Housing Element Annual Report is required to be reviewed by the legislative body of the town at a public meeting each year, and a report needs to be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st of each year. So here we are in early March, and that's why we're bringing this before you now. I did want to mention in the report that we are under some new guidelines this year as opposed to prior years where we've done the Housing Element Report. Previously, it was really just a, we provided information to the state regarding the number of building permits issued for new housing units, and with the passage of a couple of new pieces of legislation, Senate Bill 35, and I think it's AB 879, I believe, that's correct. Some additional information was required by legislator, by the state, that we were now required to report on a variety of other information that is also included in this report that hasn't been provided in the past. That includes things like the number of entitlements or applications that we have for new housing units, the number of entitlements that have been completed, again, the building permits that have been issued, and then also CVOs. So there's a, there's more of a full, sort of context within which housing applications are being...
CVO.
I'm sorry, certificate of occupancy. So actually, there, I think what's trying to be captured is not only what's in the pipeline coming forward, but also when these things are actually finished and occupied as well, and ready, ready to be housing for people to use. I wanted to, in that regard, thank Tracy, and Tracy's here this evening. She really is, in her role as administrative analyst, one of the responsibilities that, this is one of the things that she's really been working on as part of her new role in that capacity. So Tracy's here, and she can speak to some of maybe the questions that you might have on the specific numbers and the tables that are in your report as well, if you have questions about that. I did want to just go over briefly what the data that we're providing you shows and plot some, I think, interesting information. Last year, calendar year 2018, what we're providing you is that we did issue building permits. Well, actually, let's go back and start with applications that we received in 2018. I think there, if you want mine, Rebecca, we can go to the below, sorry, further down into the tables. The first table talks about housing development applications submitted. There's, there were five ADUs submitted in 2018, and as you'll see, two of those actually were also issued building permits in 2018. Moving on to the next table, in terms of the, this one talks about annual building activity and report, new construction, these are the actual entitlements that were granted. And then the most important table in this packet is the one with yellow, Table A2, which talks about the actual building permits issued in 2018 for new housing units again. So as you see, there were seven building permits for new ADUs or for new housing units in Corte Madera in 2018. We actually also included another unit that was approved and issued a building permit in 2017, so we're actually correcting the record on that. But for the purposes of 2018, seven new ADUs were issued building permits. And I think it just shows this trend, actually, that we've seen since the past, over the, I guess, if you look back at our Housing Element, 2014, I think there were two ADUs, then there was maybe zero in 2015, one in 2016, and then we started to ramp up, actually in 2017, with three new ADUs, seven last year. We have four already in the pipeline this year, not including the Robin Drive development, which also has eight, so about 12 in the next year or two. So I think it does, my viewpoint is that we were getting a lot more questions about ADUs, we're getting a lot more, people seem to be interested in it. I think that shows some of the, actually, the state legislation, our own legislation, the town council's ordinance, ordinances that it adopted. Staff's been trying to also provide some information about the process and more clear information on our website. We're seeing more interest, and I think we're seeing more housing units or ADUs, accessory dwelling units, I should explain. dwelling units, I should explain that, that are coming through the permit process as a result and actually getting constructed. And then I also included in the staff report, some information, oh, actually, sorry, I should just summarize on the table, on page five, which is the, sort of the summary table showing our progress and the town's progress, meeting the regional housing needs allocation from 2015 to 2018, we're in the fourth, this is reporting on the fourth year of an eight-year cycle, so halfway through. The town's RENA allocation was 72 total units for this cycle, 22 very low, 13, sorry, the units are assigned to certain income categories, so the very low income category was, the town was assigned 22 units, the low income category was assigned 13 units, moderate income category assigned 13 units, and then above moderate 24 units. And that table shows, in fact, 13 units have been issued building permits for very low, 13 for low, seven for moderate, and 179 for above moderate, for a total of 212 units. Why this is now takes on, I think, more importance or more relevance to some of recent legislation relates to Senate Bill 35 and the streamlining provisions of that legislation, which essentially allows or permits or requires actually certain housing developments that meet certain criteria to be processed in a streamlined fashion for permitting those housing developments, if, again, that housing project meets certain criteria, and there's many of them, there's about 11. But one of the key threshold criteria is that SB 35 only applies if the jurisdiction in which the housing development is proposed is not keeping up with its pro-rata progress towards its RENA requirements. So at this point in our process, again, we're in the fourth year, reporting on the fourth year of the eight-year cycle, we should be meeting 50% of our housing goals or the RENA goals allocation here by, at each income category. And I think the table in your staff report, on page two of the staff report, is, shows that, in fact, the town is doing that, and well above, and obviously of the above moderate category, 54% in moderate, 100% in low, and 59% in very low. So with this, I do not expect, we should not be subject, or SB 35 should not apply in the town of Corder Madera for the next four years, in fact, for the rest of the cycle. So it has been, in the past, I think you'll recall, maybe two years ago, the first sort of report by the state coming out and saying which cities and jurisdictions were actually subject to SB 35 and the town was not at that time, then last year we were, because it sort of, again, goes on a year-by-year basis whether you're keeping up with the percentages. And then this year, if the town meets, it's actually sort of like, clears you for the next four years until the end of the cycle as a whole. So I just wanted to make that clear.
So you've avoided any kind of qualitative evaluation in your report, but we're doing okay.
I did, I'll let you, let the council sort of say that.
Am I reinterpreting that correctly?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, clearly, the town is far exceeding the RENA allocation, and I think at various income levels as well, we're keeping track and keeping pace with the various housing units at each income level, and we've adopted some policies that I think have helped that along. We're going to see some, another housing project relatively soon that also is, you know, consistent with some of the Housing Element policies. So I think, yes, I think it's fair to say that we're doing okay, and we're sort of putting in place some ordinances and provisions that are helping this along.
Thanks.
Sorry, yeah, so just to wrap up, we have included some options, but there is a draft resolution for you this evening that we are requesting that you consider and recommending that you adopt, that, again, would just accept the report, that's what's before you tonight, accepting the report, and then forwarding this on to HCD further.
Are there any other questions from council? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Adam. Excellent. Have you shared this with the planning commission and what were their comments?
You know, actually, my intent is to go to them with the report next week. It's, I'm happy to, there's no requirement that we go to the planning commission with this, but certainly intend to have the same presentation for them at the next meeting.
Okay. Jim? No, just to thank you, and...
You first.
You first.
Yeah, just out of curiosity for Adam, I see that where the, in the report where the income levels are broken down, we have, then they're further broken down by deed restricted or non-deed restricted, and I'm just curious, when they're not deed restricted, what's the process for assessing what category? Do we just ask the owner what they're charging or?
No, I think it's a good question. So this relates to accessory dwelling units, and I think, like many other jurisdictions, this was a discussion that we had when we were adopting our housing elements back in 2015. At that time, our Housing Element discussed and made a case and justification for why the accessory dwelling units actually meet the various different affordable housing income levels. And in that discussion in 2015, in the Housing Element that was submitted to HCD and certified by HCD, the case was made that we will, we recognize they're non-deed restricted, but due to the nature of the actual accessory dwelling units themselves, that they should be classified as, one-third of the units should be very low-income units, one-third of the units should be low-income or qualify for those, and one-third moderate. And so that's the same approach we're taking with all of the ADUs. And so you'll see, right now, the numbers don't line up exactly in those categories, but by the end of the eight-year cycle, that's, we intend to follow through with that approach.
Sure, so just to clarify, Adam, understanding, the classification of ADUs as low-income or very low-income is just by virtue of them being ADUs, and it doesn't actually reflect what the tenant is paying?
Well, it may or may not.
It may or may not, yes.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
If I can just follow up to that, so that means if it's allowed for public rental, they would have to abide by a certain income level or?
No, again, there's no, right now, and this is similar to a lot of other, many other jurisdictions, but there aren't, there aren't, for a number of reasons, I would say, there aren't any requirements such as you have on Tam Ridge or even the Casa Buena homes where there were actual deed restrictions put into the approvals that would sort of require that the landlord or the owner of the development certify and actually get all the information, certify that, in fact, families that are renting this are either very low-income, low-income, or have moderate incomes, and can only therefore rent to those folks. So that's not, and I think it's recognized, not only by us, but the state as well, that that's not necessarily a, well, it's not a necessity to do that and still qualify those units for these income categories because of, as we talked about in our Housing Element, there's been surveys in the past, we used some surveys from other jurisdictions, Marin County had a survey at one point done, and actually tried to get information about this, what they were actually renting for, and based on that, that's how we assign the ADUs going forward. Obviously, I think as this goes forward, if we get new information, if there is more information available, that will sort of give a better, clearer idea on what these units are actually renting for, that could be factored in, in my view, is into the next housing cycle when we talk about this again going forward.
Thank you. Kind of a related question, does our town ordinance as to ADUs prohibit deed restrictions? Or does it simply allow them to occur without deed restrictions?
It allows them, there's no, it's silent, really, on whether or not there are deed restrictions or not.
Do we have any restrictions or understandings of any kind that that unit, that small unit on the same property can't be occupied by grandma or by a bounce-back millennial who's not made it out of?
Right, no. No, and indeed, I think some of the surveys that we, that were done back in early 2010s, in fact, noted that, that those were actually, maybe some aren't even rented for, you know, the actual rent amount and dollar amount, again, because they're ADUs, and they're on a property, maybe a single-family home, with a single-family home, are not charged any rent, because they may be, but they still are a housing resource and a housing unit.
And is there any way that we verify that it's actually used for housing as opposed to a studio or a home office or?
Not at this point.
A business or something?
Not at this point.
Final, why, why do you have the, all of the ADUs in the low-income category as opposed to scattered around? I think, I mean, isn't that an assumption, or is that just because you had to put them somewhere, or why are they, why are we crediting ourselves with low-income compliance?
Yeah.
And we have no idea?
Well, I think, again, we're just, we're going back to what we said was going to be our, the way that we are going to assign them, so we're keeping consistent with the Housing Element justification in the Housing Element that was adopted back in 2015. So, and also, clearly, I mean, I, we're, my goal is that at the end of the eight-year cycle, we are going to have a third, a third, a third at each income category, as we said we would. But obviously, at this point in time, I'm assigning them where frankly, we're going to meet the, you know, the 50% threshold in certain, in certain levels, so. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Open it to the public for comment or questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or a possible motion.
Do you guys want to discuss it, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to move the approved draft Resolution 07/2019 as presented.
A second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avazia?
Yes.
You know what, can I make one comment before we move on?
Yes, sir.
Adam, let me just thank you publicly, and also Tracy, they were asked by our committee, the Legislative Committee for Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers, some months ago to put together the chart that appears in the staff report that shows the number of units for, by Senator Maguire, who has been debating, and we're trying to persuade him not to have, you know, a crazy bill that's going to get passed, it's going to doom us all, and so they did an excellent, excellent and efficient job putting the numbers together correctly and quickly, and I appreciate your responsiveness for that. It serves the town very well, and you represent it as well in that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess one almost rhetorical question is if Senator Maguire's SB four or any of the governors, four and five, but four in particular, or any of the others pass, you got to be prepared for the rules of this game to change, right? Because this is the year when housing, housing is going to change in California, right?
Always changing, yeah, constantly.
Changing all the time. Okay. Item 6C, discussion and possible direction to town manager. Adam, thank you so much. Town manager regarding incentive pay for certain staff members who are providing financial and administrative services to the Central Marin Fire Authority and potentially the Marin Emergency Radio Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, and I just want to say, give the council credit for the administrative analyst position that we added a while back. That is the work of our administrative analyst in process, so I always like to give this credit when credit's due. Okay. So this item here is for discussion, an update to council, and direction. Whatever council directs me to do as a town manager, I will come back to you with a separate action item at a future date. And so, as you know, we're part of two, we're part of many JPAs, joint power authorities, but the two most important that really touch our town and public safety are police and fire. Historically, what happens is for police, one of the city, member agency, one of the cities or towns have to provide administrative support as well as financial support to the authority. Larkspur currently provides that support. What we do as part of the management committee is we are all involved, the city and town managers, but we rotate on an annual basis tied to whoever the chairs of the police council as an executive manager for the next year. And so for Corder Madera, we'll be representing both councils, police and fire, as the executive manager this upcoming year, so we'll be heavily involved with that. With the imminent consolidation of fire, we were actually, we will actually be approving in a second, in a separate action, the CalPERS contract at the end of this month, and so payroll, the first payroll of April, we'll be switching fire, Central Marin Fire for Larkspur and Corder Madera to Corder Madera. So we'll be, we'll be managing that effective April. And so with that imminent consolidation, there's some things that come into play for us as part of the JPA, the town, our town clerk will be the clerk of the authority, I'll be the executive manager. We will handle all billing and payroll and finance director operations, the town of Corder Madera is responsible for that. With that comes the cost, we will receive revenue for that work, it'll be approximately $35,000. Looking at other JPAs and the extended workload of our staff, your town manager is not included in this conversation, but it does affect six staff members, they're listed in this report. It's the administrative analyst, it's both of our finance analysts, our town clerk and our finance director. What I'm asking for is consideration of a 5% incentive pay. It is the standard, when you look at JPAs in the area and the time spent, you know, those JPAs run like little cities and towns. And so I think it's important, if we're going to ask for the added workload, that we do incentivize that for our staff. So that is a recommendation that was coming to you regardless. The second, the second item, and I kind of tied them together because they do affect JPAs, it's MIRA, the Marin Emergency Radio Authority. MIRA is a 25-member agencies, it consists of the county, all the cities and towns, and a bunch of special districts. It's the most single important infrastructure JPA that affects all of us from a public safety standpoint. It is our 911 infrastructure, our radios, first line of defense for public safety to be able to communicate and be interoperable. The first generation of our radio system really became obsolete years ago, and you may remember, in 2014, we passed the county bond measure of about $40 million to support the next generation project. So lots going on with MIRA. MIRA also needs administrative and financial support, and part of the JPA, you need a host agency, and so that's been the Nevada Fire District for the past 10 years. They've hosted, they've hosted all the meetings, they receive the mail, they have a phone line to, you know, for any messaging for MIRA, they also provide administrative and financial support. Their contract is approximately $65,000 a year for reimbursement through MIRA to provide those services. And with the recent retirement of the finance director of the fire district, the fire chief gave notice to MIRA back on February 1st of this year, 90 days' notice, that they will no longer be the host agency. So what we did is we, we basically reached out to all the other 20, the 24-member agencies and asked if anyone, and really pleaded if anyone would take over the hosting responsibilities, and I'm disappointed to tell you that no one has taken a leadership role to do that. Your staff, and I put in the report, and I just, I want to, I want to signal to you that, you know, your town manager's been heavily involved in MIRA, vice president of the MIRA board, on the executive committee, I'm the chair of the executive committee, I'm also the chair of the project oversight committee. I believe in MIRA as a chief and still as a town manager. In 2014, when the bond measure came up, we had a similar issue. A lot of member agencies didn't step up when it came to the bond measure, and so four people did. Your town manager, Larry Chu, is a council member in Larkspur, and two fire chiefs, Chief Pierce and Chief Roach. That passed by 517 votes, I think, and so it was very close. And I think the four of us that have been involved in that, we want this project done right, and we want to support MIRA, because our names are, our names are on it, and we believe in this mission. So when none of the 25-member agencies or 24 other member agencies were willing to be a host agency, I got with the executive director, who I respect very much, Maureen Cassingham of MIRA, she's presented to this council numerous times, and basically told her that we would consider it for Corder Madera. we would consider it for Corde Madera. Ultimately, it was going to be a council decision, but we would vet it as a staff. And so, I grabbed my staff, and it says a lot about them, but I grabbed Rebecca, Lorena, and Daria, and we met with the Nevada staff and Maureen. And we went through what it means to be a member agency, or a host agency, what it would take just on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, and a yearly basis, and really spent a lot of time with them to understand what that was. And what we have right now is a commitment from Nevada Fire to close the books, do the audit for this fiscal year, which is really important. We would transition as a host agency if council was agreeable to it July 1st. Kind of came back with staff, and really, you know, I feel strongly about it, taking the leadership role. I think the council does. But really, staff, they're the ones that have to do this. And so, we stepped back, and we spent a lot of time, and Rebecca can speak to this as well, if you have any questions for her. But I'm just proud of staff. They really, they problem-solved it together, and staff does want to take on this responsibility. And I just think it says a lot about them. With that, I'm just going to acknowledge, I think Rebecca has a hard time saying no, and so does Daria and Lorena. And we spent a lot of time to say, how do we spend our time, you know, 2,000 hours a year? And how can we make ourselves more efficient? How can we clear up some of the things that they do? And so, we spent a lot of time with that. And that's really my goal this next year, is to free them up, free her up, where she can say no, and she can go home on time. She doesn't work on weekends. So, I just mentioned that to you, that I feel like we have a plan to free up our staff, but I think it's also something that we have the capability to do. If we did take on MIRA, I think there is enough work to hire a part-time finance, kind of a utility player, you know, using the baseball term, that can kind of help administratively as a redundancy, but also help Daria on the finance team, and can really help us with three things. Help us be really proactive with the fire authority, help us with MIRA, and really focus on our budget, how we develop our budget through the year, and have a nice budget book, and really make that a professional, something we can be really proud of. And I think we have some work there. So, those three items, I see that part-time contract worker, salary only, not benefits, helping us. If you step back and look at it, what I'm asking you fiscally, if you go to page three, what I'm asking for you, if you would consider the incentive pay, it's about $29,000 to $30,000 annually. The part-time employee would be about 40, up to $45,000. Potentially, it could be two part-time employees, but only up to $45,000. We're looking at a revenue of about $100,000 to $110,000 between the two JPAs. I'm tying the MIRA conversation. If you think about the fire authority, we're probably committed to the fire authority for the next decade of supporting them administratively. MIRA, I look at it as an annual kind of reevaluation, but I tied it three years out to really come back to council with the report of, should we continue this or not? It's tied to the contract of the executive director of MIRA. It's tied to the conclusion of the next-generation project, and also would give us three years to say, is this a good thing for us, or is it not? That contract is, you have a 90-day notification clause. If you, if we did have to get out, if something happened catastrophically that we didn't expect, we could give 90 days' notice and get out of that contract with that.
No, we couldn't.
I'm sorry?
We'd give them 90 days' notice, we'd look around for the other people to pick up the slack.
Yeah.
You know?
I think it's something, the executive director had a good point. She, she was like, look, it's one thing to give people incentive pay, it's one thing to order your people to take on this responsibility, but to be successful, you have to want to do it. And so, that's really the key here. And I think there's a lot of staffs that are ever worked and don't want to take on this responsibility. Our staff, I think they're leaders, and so, I'm proud of them. This doesn't affect your town manager at all, taking on MIRA. And that's an important point. It's affecting the staff. And I think it allows them to take a leadership role. I'm proud of them. And Rebecca, you can jump in there if you want. But I do feel like it'll make us better, and we will be able to have added resources with the added revenue. I don't think taking on the fire authority, we have the ability to add another part-time person, but taking on MIRA, we would. And when you break down the workload on an hourly basis, weekly, this is something we feel pretty comfortable with. And again, that's not me saying that. I think it's the staff really reevaluating what we're doing. And so, with that, I'm happy to open it up and answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Jim?
Do you have an empty cubicle next door?
We do.
We do.
Okay. Questions, maybe? So, financially, we're, it looks like we're covered by these organizations. It's really a time and a management issue?
That's correct.
It sounds like, okay. Okay. Any other questions from council? Then we'll open it up to the public for comments or questions. Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the staff for, I mean, the council, excuse me, for discussion and possible motion.
I'm not sure I understood your last question, which is that we're getting income for this extra cost, or aren't we a contributor as well from our own budget?
We also, from the fire authority budget, we will receive $35,000 approximately from the city of Larkspur to provide those services. Entering a contract with MIRA, we would receive $65,000 to $70,000 annually to provide those services. So, we would have a reoccurring revenue of about $100,000 to $110,000, give or take. To run those two programs, we're looking at a recommendation of a $29,000 incentive pay and up to $45,000 in contract assistance. So, we will net on this, on this agreement. All equipment, software to provide these services are the responsibility of the member agencies. So, for the fire authority, if we did need some software, it would be split 50/50 between Corde Madera and Larkspur.
And I hope this is a short question, but I thought the county sheriff really has the central 911 and dispatch. And is MIRA under that, or collaborating side by side with that? What's the relationship there?
The best way to explain it is, MIRA provides the equipment for that dispatch center. It provides the infrastructure for it. So, we have multiple dispatch centers in the county, but anything that has to do with radio communications, MIRA is the JPA that provides that infrastructure. And then, it's managed by the 25-member agencies. But you're right. And then, the dispatch centers are run by the sheriff and other agencies. But without MIRA, you would have, the next-generation project's $40 million. So, no single agency can pay for that equipment.
Item 7, provide administrative support for executive officer. What does that mean, and how much work is involved? Page 2.
Yeah, so if you look at page 2 at the bottom, and what we did is, we kind of did a breakdown with staff. And so, when you look at that summary that you just, 1 through 7, number 7 would be split between the town clerk and the administrative analyst, but I put the total hours to provide the support administratively and financially. You can kind of see it, 1 through 4, at the bottom of page 2. You're looking at anywhere from 3 to 5 hours a week of support on average.
All right. And item 1, provide meeting space for the board and committees. Given our numerous vacant meeting rooms, where in the parking lot are they going to meet?
Councilmember Andrews, we actually discussed the meeting space with the MIRA staff when we met with them last Monday. Given that their meetings occurred during business hours during the day, it wouldn't conflict with any of the other meetings that our council chambers are currently scheduled for. We, we felt that we could accommodate the MIRA board and the executive board meetings here in this council chambers. I believe they're Thursdays, right?
Right. And so, a lot of them are committee meetings, and so, we do have parking. We could handle it in the afternoon. The big, the major board meetings, we would have to be a little creative if we had it here. And so, we would have to look at employees' parking, you know, in, in the park, for instance, potentially. And so, it's something where, we can be creative. I think we can figure it out. We can also, by the JPA, just identify multiple meeting locations. We just have to identify what they are, where they are. And so, we have CNPA. We could use a community center. We can use here. So, we'll be creative.
Okay. And again, this is not something we're voting on. We're just providing direction. So, I'll just step forward and say, I've worked with Todd on MIRA for years in various capacities, and I know how involved you have been with it, and how important you were in the last cycle back through to the voters. And obviously, this is critical to you. And if you think it's important, and if you think we can handle it, then I'm all for it. I think, you know, I'm fine with, it looks like financially, it's a wash for us. So, if you're comfortable with staff handling it, then I'm comfortable going forward and giving you the direction to do it. And Central Marin Fire, we just need to pick up. So, that would be my direction. So, ditto.
Yeah, I'd agree. And I'd just like to say, I'm impressed with staff for stepping up, because nobody else was willing to do this, and it is more work. So, I'm impressed with our staff, and I just want to make sure that they do have sort of an out, if it becomes apparent after doing this, that it is too much work, that there's sort of a checkpoint where we can say, maybe we're ready to pass this off to somebody else. But I'm very proud of our staff for stepping up here.
That's great, because it is important, and no one knows how important it is, because we haven't really had to use it. But believe me, when we're going to need it, and we're going to use it, everyone's going to realize what a big deal it is. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in agreement. I will say the one thing that you should be aware of is Rebecca has been the, what's your title for MCCMC?
What is my title?
The brains.
I guess I'm the secretary.
Like Grand Pooh Bar. So, Rebecca has, the thing that I wanted you to, that wanted the council to understand, and Todd to understand, which he may sort of get, is that the number of compliments we receive about our town, and it's directly because of Rebecca. So, our current president, Ray Withy, the former president, Kate Collin, the idiot before Kate, they, and the mayors and the council members from virtually every town come up to me again, and again, and again, and again, Rebecca. It's like a joke. You're, they all think you're fabulous. So, be aware, it's, I think it's healthy to move on and do new things now and then, so maybe this is your time. But we've received a lot of very public compliments entirely because of Rebecca. And I guess this is sort of in that same vein, which is taking responsibility, not just for yourself, but those around you, which is why you want to take on the two new things, right? Okay, anyway, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to be, because I understand that's part of the deal. You're going to give up the MCCMC, right?
She can give up her family life.
Well, see, I know. I mean, yeah, I'm with Eli's comment, though. We've got to be a little careful there, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I'm hesitant, how should I put it? I know we're going to have to do it, but I'm hesitant to do anything that requires us to more, to commit to more space usage until we actually have finalized what's going on with our, with the town hall, and in particular, adding more bodies to the staff, unless we're convinced that we know where we can park them for the next three or four years. And when I park, you know, it's like...
I will say just to that, that we are moving forward with a 20-by-six, a 24-by-6D trailer kind of modular unit that will actually be able to pick up three offices and move our three engineers into. And so, that'll be helpful on a short-term basis, as we work through as a working group, what we're going to do at town hall. The other thing is, we do have an open space upstairs for an administrative person, and this is a position that I see that can also telecommute. And so, I think we can be creative here and do some things. So, but you're right. It's, and I think when we look at the board meeting space, that's something we need to really be creative and think about before we host it here.
And I just was advised, I forgot to ask, the public comments. So, does the public have any comment on this? Is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment or speak on this? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to turn it back to Jim. Sorry. Apologize for that.
It's just my only comment that, you know...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the other one is, on the incentive pay, is that something that is in line with your feelings? Are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Is it something you want me to continue to vet? Okay. I will come back to you with...
And all these numbers are, reflect that incremental pay? Okay.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
You have a direction?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Town manager and council reports. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just two quick updates. We had our first, held our first working group meeting on the town hall project. Our vice mayor and council member Beckman are part of that. And I thought it was good. I think it was an important reminder from a staff perspective, even though we've thought about this for 14 months. I think the group, and please jump in here at any point, I think we recognize of, you know, it's an exigency, and I think that's why staff is throwing out schedules, but we really don't know where we're at. And to just throw away the schedule at this point, and really, you know, we're going to start meeting every two weeks and just start problem-solving the issue, there are really some good ideas in there, and I think, I think we're going to make some major progress over the coming months. It is an exigency. I've really just voiced that I feel like, in the past 10, 15 years ago, I think the decision-makers in this room could have solved the problem for us, and they didn't. And I just, you know, again, leadership, I would like to solve that problem, no matter what it looks like, you know, moving forward. So, but I'm excited, and you guys jump in here at all. But the bottom line is, we're basically starting from scratch. We're going to take a fresh look, and really look at this as a group and problem-solve it. And so, I'm excited about that. And then, the other, the other item, I want to let you know, the NRGs, neighborhood response groups, have been really successful. And the sales tax measure, we budget up to $500,000 annually for fire prevention and disaster preparedness. We have a $300,000 vegetation management program, and we're really using the chipper program as the starting point. Marla Orth has really helped staff. We're going to be coming back to council, you know, to really look at, kind of like we're doing with Lori Rice, have Marla assist us from that standpoint with town training. She's helped us with a number of town trainings, as well as helping us with the chipper program to rally the neighborhood groups, starting from Meadowcrest and work our way, all the way around the ball of town, and as well as work with Todd Lando on the fire department, on the firewise. Meadowcrest was the first firewise community in our jurisdiction. Hill Path just submitted their application, and our goal is to have five to seven firewise neighborhoods by the end of the year, and Marla's taken the lead on that. And so, again, between now and the red flag days that start probably in August, we hope to expend $300,000 in clearing vegetation in our neighborhoods and all town-owned spaces, as well as continuing to work with the county to have them help us do their part as well. And so, and the last part is, we, we should have our bids for an early warning system. And so, we'll bring that to council for an update. We should have that by the next council meeting. So, ask the fire chief to attend, and that'll be our early warning system on voice commands. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Reports?
Have a couple. On the transportation front, there've been some challenges and some opportunities. But obviously, the temporary closure of the Richmond-Sanofiels Bridge has been an issue. The repairs that are related to the spalling concrete are just about to start when weather clears. That's going to be expensive, and they're going to try to do that at nighttime so that it doesn't interfere with commuting. Route 37 has been closed on and off, and there's no short or long-term solution that is within funding and within grasp. However, the Transportation Authority of Marin has authorized the signing of a, an MOU between Transportation Authority, authorities of Marin, Sonoma, Napa, Solano, to, as well as the Bay Area Transit Authority, to really get serious about replanning that whole Route 37 corridor, including studying the environmental aspects of A, the A segment, which is our segment in Marin, leading to the racetrack, essentially, which is obviously in Sonoma. So, that environmental work is just about to begin, and the MOU, which sets the framework for everybody working together on that planning, has been authorized to be signed. The, thanks to Measure AA's passage in November, the yellow school bus program has been re-upped and slightly expanded, and TAM authorized a $600,000 contribution towards that, which is by no means all of the money that's needed. So, our contribution of 25K or whatever that is in our budget is still going to be necessary. I mentioned the on-ramp metering program, which is going to be commencing in a month. Gelati has been awarded this work. I believe, and they believe, that this will be started in Sausalito, and it will go one exit on-ramp at a time, going northbound. And the southbound ramps won't be started for another five or six years, which to me is illogical, and to some of the other commissioners of TAM, it's illogical. But that is the way it's going to be done per Caltrans and per the momentum of the work that has already started. If there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to try to address. But come April, you'll start seeing some activity, starting in Sausalito and coming closer and closer to our on-ramps northbound. I asked and it was answered that the planning for the 101 to I-580 eastbound connection... was answered that the planning for the 101 to I-580 eastbound connection is slowly proceeding towards design. And there, there are some thoughts about how to do that in a way that won't be outrageously expensive. It will be a, creating essentially two exits in southern San Rafael, one of which has a tighter radius and connects over Bellem to 580, and the other of which goes down, as it does now, to, to Bellem. The Nevada Narrows work that was authorized by transportation legislation in, in November is going to start by the end of the year. And then we had a Safe Roads to School meeting, which is related to the Transit Authority's report to the, to TAM, which is one of the, one of their things that they're working on as they improve their services to really step up the service to the high schools, in particular Redwood High School, whose attendance is exploding and whose parking lot is too small to contain them. And so neighbors are all upset. The Redwood, as you may know, has expanded greatly the number of carpool spaces that are authorized on, on the site, probably could even do some more of that. The buses that come into the school every day are full to the brim. So they're looking at ways, Transit Authority's looking at ways to add a bus or two, to and fro. If, there's a report on the Citizens Oversight Committee's work overseeing the, all of the work of TAM and the election. If anybody wants to have a look at it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Eli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, I reported that I had a lovely chat with the Larkspur Corredam and Larkspur School Districts, one of their newest trustees and their new liaison to the town council. And she is here tonight. So that is Ms. Catherine Chan back there. I don't have anything to report from the most recent school board meeting because I had a conflict. So I will review those minutes and report back on that at the next meeting. Likewise, I was not able to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting today for personal reasons, but I will also review those minutes and report back there at our next meeting. I participated with council member Andrews and our town manager in the town hall annex working groups first meeting on Thursday, which was very positive. And Todd just touched on that in great detail. I, yeah, I would, I guess I would just give my perspective was that what, what the working group sort of did was say, we pumped the brakes and said, let's, let's step back here. And instead of diving right into designing a new permanent building on this site, let's kind of step back and take a more deliberate and master planning oriented approach to this. And so I think in the meantime, that obviously does not address the crisis of staff not having anywhere to work, which is I think where Todd was talking about, a, a trailer that's going to have to come in there. So I, I think that's kind of where that stands now. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you.
Would it make sense to get a couple more trailers so that we can, and, you know, in terms of building it out, instead of doing it in two phases, doing it as one? And I, I guess really what I'm thinking is.
We can't, yeah, we can't really address that. It's not on the agenda.
I know. But for the next item, agenda.
Oh, okay. Can we do, let's work through town.
Sure. Go ahead.
Council reports.
I guess we've actually done a lot of work this last couple of weeks, haven't we? I went to a bunch of meetings myself. I attended the Central Marin Fire Council, the Central Marin Police Council, the Legislative Committee. I'll report briefly on the MCCMC meeting and Marin Clean Energy. Sorry, guys. It'll be fast, though. So the Central Marin Fire Council, along with Mayor Ravazio, we saw a badge pinning of Don Stasiowski as the new deputy fire chief. Awesome. The chief reported on the LAFCO exemption has been given to the Central Marin Fire. So that finally has come through. And finally, we approved a bunch of CalPERS pension and other benefits, including a memorandum of understanding with the International Firefighters Local 1775. So my takeaway is, our Central Marin Fire Council is pretty much up and running. Would you agree with that? Okay. Central Marin Police Council, also with the famous Mayor Ravazio. The, we received the financial audit for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, and engaged in a somewhat animated conversation because the latest accounting regulations require us, as well as all the jurisdictions, to report on the fairly massive pension liabilities that we're all experiencing. I think they're in a reasonably sound financial position, but have, we have a lot of work to do to try to catch up in the way that Todd's been manhandling our, our town to bring them back in line. I hope that we can make the same thing happen with Central Marin Police Council eventually. We discussed strategic planning for 2019, and we approved Mayor Bob Ravazio as chair of the council. Is Larry the vice chair?
I believe so.
Yeah. Larry was the vice chair. Okay. My only report from the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee, other than that I have been formally appointed as the vice chair, is that there are hundreds of new bills, which we do know very little about at this point. At the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members meeting, we had a report, as you all heard, from Senator McGuire. But if any member of the public would like more information about his really voluminous and detailed discussion of housing, transportation, the governor's priorities, and all kinds of things, I'm happy to give it to them. And Marin Clean Energy reported that Solano County has been approved for entry by the Public Utilities Commission into Marin Clean Energy. So we continue to grow. Marin Clean Energy is just getting bigger and bigger. There are 4% reserves out of the most recent budget, which is a positive net for the last year, but fairly dramatically less than anticipated because of, in other words, Marin Clean Energy is still doing financially great, but not as extraordinary as was anticipated. And the reason.
Initially.
Yes. And the, the reason why is, there were two things. One of them is apparently the cost of energy is fairly dramatically rising. Sorry, Bob, I'm going to be as quick as I can. And then secondly, the estimates and data usage that they relied upon was less than they had anticipated. And finally, we adopted a, an investment policy. We're in the midst of discussing an investment policy for the reserves. It's, you know, Marin Clean Energy now has revenues north of $450 million a year.
Wow.
Half a billion dollars a year. That's a pretty big, and it's, you know, and it gets, and it's going to get bigger. So anyway, it's just growing. And those are all my reports.
Thank you.
I've forgotten. I've forgotten one.
Okay, please.
Although I, I never forget it. It's not exactly a, an ex officio position from this council, but I've been participating in the county's drawdown Marin program in the, particularly in the renewable energy stakeholders working group. And I just wanted to say that the group of almost two dozen really very talented people, myself excluded, are coming up with some nifty solutions in the area of advancing with renewable energy in the county. We're working, working with Marin Clean Energy. The last meeting was at Marin Clean Energy. And I think it's pretty exciting. There's no substance to report right now, but I just wanted to make sure that you aren't surprised when in the next couple of months, we start coming out. We and, and there's one, another working group on transportation and another that's been started on the built environment. And there's three more that will be started in April. So there will be things coming out of this drawdown Marin program very soon.
Okay. Thank you. And I attended fire and police, but Sloan reported on that. I also had attended the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Monthly Meeting Monday morning. And just a couple of quick things out of that. 62% of the homes in the Twin Cities are now in NRGs, which is pretty amazing.
Wow.
And most of the other homes that are not yet are in multi-unit housing, and they're developing a plan to get that. But that's really extraordinary. This is really involved.
Is there any place else in the state, anything, anywhere close?
I have no idea. It's a very good question. But we have a really involved group, and they're doing an incredible job. We have neighborhood drills coming up on Sunday. There's going to be a neighbor energy drill. And one of the other things that came up in the meeting was the chipper program and how excited everybody was when I told them what Corredam and Larkspur was doing. And they were having a conversation with Larkspur afterwards to find out if they were going to be doing anything. But everyone was really excited and happy with what Corredam and Larkspur has been doing for fire prevention and what we're doing with the neighborhood. So Todd, thank you. And that was it. Yeah. And I just wanted to again say, yeah, we basically approved Central Marin Fire. I mean, that's like we're rolling. So that's a huge, huge deal. Todd, thank you for all the energy and effort that that has taken to get that through. That is amazing how hard that was. Okay. And then we'll move on to item 8A, review of draft agenda for March 19th. Did you comment on this, Jim?
Well, it's, maybe it's not for the next meeting, but one shortly thereafter, I think we should sort of have an informational meeting where we can present where we stand in terms of this town hall redesign, you know, annex, just to get us, so before everything's set and stone and all the plans have been created, we can, you know, the council can sort of sit there and say, hey, yeah, keep going ahead with what you're doing, or wait a minute, stop. You're, you're off course. And.
As a future agenda item, I think it would be good, as council member Beckman and I spoke about this very issue this morning, it's probably, it's important to, I think the working group. I mean, we really set an aggressive schedule every two weeks. And I think when the working group and the two, the vice mayor and council member feel it's time, we will take something to the council to discuss it, give an update, and also talk about temporary housing if we have to do that as well. And at that point, if we have the blessing of the council, would be to start an informational campaign or a discussion with the, with the community, you know? And so I don't think we have a plan yet and, you know, see what our recommendations are. And it would probably take us, I think, from just a conversation, three or four meetings. So we're probably looking a few months before coming back to council. We have a lot of work to do. But you're right. But when you, when you, the two of you think, feel we're ready, we will.
All right. Okay. Good. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Then, item nine, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening. Appreciate it.